The guy didn't seem like he was like, oh, oh, so what? Like, we don't even run our sprinklers.
She had trouble, though.
But it's like, dude, you were wasting so much water.
You're on. I'd like to call this meeting to order for Tuesday, May 7th, 2024. Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Here.
Trustee Hartz.
Here.
Trustee Katzos.
Here.
Trustee Snooks.
Here.
Trustee Moreland.
Here.
Trustee McLaren.
Here.
And Mayor Ah.
Here.
Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine of justice for all.
Does the board have any conflicts of interest? Seeing none, we'll move on. General public input. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
Brian Blanchard, 627 Louisiana Drive.
Once again, Brian Blanchard, 627 Louisiana Drive. So honeymoon's over, everybody. Let's get to the business. I am hoping that the board supports and encourages the master park. To me, that's an important thing that has been around for a long, long time, as long as we've lived here, up and down, back and forth. But I would encourage the board to seriously look at that, whatever direction we go, whether it's a sales tax or a special district. I'm willing to help with that, but I think it's important to the town and the residents and the businesses. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Mary Benson, I live at 723 Lupine. I have been watching, listening, you know, reading minutes, paying attention to all the things that have been going on since I've been here for the last four years. And I think the town is pretty awesome, and I think you guys have a lot of things going on. I've been paying attention to how you've been looking at everything that's been done, right, in the previous council and everything, and you're revisiting everything. Since I've been here, there's been no childcare, for example. The family center closed. I know that people have been bussed into Bayfield and different, or into Durango for Boys and Girl Club and different things like that, and I saw that that was one of the urgent items you've discussed recently is childcare. I grew up in Kansas, and when I grew up there, we had a Y. And at that Y, I learned how to swim. And when I moved to California, I had my kids in Y camps and different things like that. So I became curious about the Y. Can we have a Y here, for example? So I reached out to the corporate office of the Y, and they sent me information. So I have that information that I am going to give to somebody if you're interested. But it kind of goes through the steps of how to, you know, research that. They did a demographics for us. They did it within five miles of Bayfield. We're currently not at the population that they're suggesting. They have given us points of contact for the local Ys in the area and told us how we could be successful in doing something like that. It's not daycare, per se, but it does offer health things, and I feel like their, their goals and objectives of the Y fall well in line with the core values of Bayfield and this town and the school districts and all the different things that you guys are all about in this area. And so I'd be, you know, happy to help with a committee or do whatever to get this going. They, there's a scorecard in here that you can kind of rate. Maybe we could expand, you know, the area, the service area to get, it just, it outlines a lot of things, and I think it's super helpful. So I'll turn this in. And then the other thing that I have expressed one other time when I was here was about all of the development and all of the, you know, we tried sales tax increase and getting revenue into the city, right, into the town. And with everything that's going on along 160 and all of that property that's being developed, I just, when I go to Pagosa Springs, I see how people stop there, right? I just feel like that area, that corridor, is a place where I think we could get more tourism if people would stop through here. It's not like, you know, if you come from the other side of Durango, you're going quite a ways, right, if you're traveling to Pagosa. If you go to Aztec, for example, which I went there on the weekend because I had to go to Target, you know, it's, you don't stop, you don't go through Aztec. So I was thinking that maybe tourism and ways to get people to come and, and stop and maybe do a bike trail or go to a lake or, you know, different things like that that we could get people to help us have more money for things that the, you know, Durango, or Bayfield needs. We're growing, you know, we're, it's just, to me, it seems like an opportunity for tourism. That's my statement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a, any general public input on the agenda items? Seeing none, I will move on. I'll read Jackie Moreland Day proclamation.
Mr. Mayor, I think you forgot letter G.
Approve agenda.
Did I skip one?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Oh, my bad. Approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
I can second it.
Got a motion and it's second. Can I get roll call, please?
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
Trustee Snooks.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaren.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yay.
And now I'll move on to the proclamation.
Proclamation. As Mayor of Bayfield, I hereby proclaim May 6th, 2024, Jackie, Jackie Moreland Day in the town of Bayfield, Colorado. Jackie Moreland graduated from Western State College in Gunnison, Colorado with a degree in elementary education and special education, thus beginning her commitment to the Bayfield community. 1977 to 78, her first job was working with people with developmental needs at the sheltered workshop. From 78 to 81, she worked for the Ignacio School District as Title I language arts teacher in the high school, and she helped Native American students learn English and succeed in school. 1981, she started daycare in Bayfield and tutored students. From 82 to 85, was a recreational district for the town of Bayfield and implemented a Fort Lewis College grant to open a drop-in center for at-risk teenagers. From 82 to 87, she opened a first-of-a-kind in Southwest Colorado preschool in downtown Bayfield geared toward integrating and educating kids with disabilities alongside kids without disabilities. From 87 to 2011, she starred as a children's program director and left as executive director at Community Connections in Durango, a nonprofit dedicated to creating opportunities for children and adults with intellectual and development disabilities to lead healthy and fulfilling lives within the community. In 1995, she co-founded BEEP, a nonprofit preschool in Bayfield that embodies her lifelong commitment to maturing young minds. In 2016, she helped launch downtown Bayfield block parties. 2017, helped launch a downtown farmer's market. 2019, earned the Vicky Maddox Downtown Owner of the Year Award from Downtown Colorado Inc. for her efforts and other local involvement. From 2017 to 2022, she opened and operated Mill Street Inn Air and B in downtown Bayfield. Jackie Moreland, thank you for your dedication to the Bayfield community and happy birthday. Given under my hand on the third day of April, or of May, 2024, Thomas All, Mayor.
Has everyone read the minutes from April 16th of 2024?
Yes. Katie, I'm wondering, can I ask some questions off those minutes, or that I should have done that prior?
So your presiding officer can ask questions of the board, and we're here to answer anything that you have.
Okay. I just wanted some explanation behind the school accountability meetings. Just, what is that?
So it's the, the PTA. If you remember, that's what they used to call it. They don't call it that anymore. It's accountability. That's a Colorado standard. They have all kinds of acronyms to call it SAC and whatever else, but it is a accountability meeting. So each school, a public school has accountability meeting about four a year, and then the district has an accountability meeting as well. And the last two were actually the same night as the housing summit.
Okay. I didn't know that that's what they call the PTA now. Let's see. There was one question that I asked in an email to you, and I just kind of wanted to get a little bit more clarification. What is sort of the average monthly past due billing for utilities?
The average? Well, you know, the customary bill's about $120. So if they get behind one month and then two months, it can be up to $200. And then there's a shut-off period that they, they either have to at least get close to current, or if they don't meet that deadline, they'll be shut off. So it would be probably about $250, give or take, for a residence.
Okay. And then, do you know what the average is of how many of those are past due?
I, I think that we send out shut-off notices. How many do we actually do get?
So it's really month to month, and it really depends on time of the year, too, on how many we have. I'd say low range is about 15 households that we notify. Most of them rectify it. Then we can have some months where there's 30 households, and maybe about half of them rectify it right away. And it just, month to month, it changes. It's not always the same people or the same situation.
What can happen, too, and it becomes kind of a cycle, is you can come in and pay just what the back due balance was, and that clears your red tag, but at that point, another billing cycle's always already come through, too. So that bill's on top of that there. So I think a lot of times, people think, oh, good, I'm, I'm straight with the town, and no, you, you've got another billing cycle happening. You just paid what was past due to avoid that shut-off.
Okay, okay. Also, I wanted just to make a comment about your response for the salary comparison, and I realize you're still waiting on a report. I think that the comments that you made were spot-on as far as what is overall employee, you know, happiness, if you want to call it that. And then I think when that comes in, I'd like a, some sort of representation of what it costs the town of Bayfield for turnover. I think in, in presenting a cost comparison, you know, request for...
Isn't that further on the list?
Yeah.
So, right now, we're doing the agenda?
Yes. I know, but it was in the agenda, too, from last week, so.
Okay.
Okay, all right. All right, that's it. Thank you.
The reason I ask that is usually we're just approving that what is said in there was correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other comment on the minutes from April 16th of 24?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. We do the approval of the minutes, April 16th, 2024.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
Trustee Snooks.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaren.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yay.
Next up is the attendance roster of the elected officials from the April 8th DOLA training and the May 2nd retreat. We need a motion for approval.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the attendance roster of elected officials, April 8th DOLA training and May 2nd retreat.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second? Any discussion?
Isn't it a motion to confirm?
Say that again.
On our sheet, it's a motion to confirm, not a motion to approve.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Motion to, I'd like to make a motion to confirm the attendance roster of elected officials.
And I'll second that.
For the April 8th DOLA training and May 2nd retreat.
I'll still second that.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
Trustee Snooks.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaren.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yay.
Town managers report?
Yeah, so the flowers getting ready to put out here at the mill and Parkway Station are in and out of my garage, inside for, it's gonna freeze, and outside for a little sunshine. So getting ready, probably after Mother's Day, I'll get those planted. As far as downtown Colorado, Nicole and I attended that. I thought it was really helpful to, you know, I've, I've been to quite a few of these events over the years and just kind of a reminder what's out there for funding, especially for the downtown area, looking at Mill Street and, and some other things. So kind of, it's just great to have those resources, just kind of, you know, you know, have that reminder that those are all out there. With a lot of conferences in April, the annual conference in Glenwood Springs, CCCMA stands for County, or Colorado City and County Managers Association, that's in Glenwood Springs almost every year, and they, they definitely had some really good leadership work sessions, sessions, but SIRSA did the same session that has some really bad news regarding the growing liability for police departments and law enforcement. So anyway, we'll continue to kind of pay attention on that as well. We usually get their requests for information, was about August, maybe, and then, and then we have to kind of fill things out and send it back to them. So we really don't see the actual, their quote until about October for 2025, so kind of see how that goes. I did attend the CML Executive Board meeting on April 26th regarding, obviously, a lot of the legislation. There's a lot of great legislation that now has been tabled, and, and then the tribes' request basically to, to get consent regarding annexation. It doesn't affect Bayfield, but it does affect Ignacio, Durango, and Cortez. And because I'm the only Southwest CML representative, I just wanted to make sure I was there. And I also went to Durango's special meeting just to kind of get an idea of where they're at. And, you know, I think that they, they really have great respect for the tribe, and it's just a matter of, of, I think they were a little surprised by some of the legislation that was coming down, but I think they're gonna work through that, so. Most of, we had trustees that were there at the housing summit, and we had some really good HR director interviews, two really good potentials and one possibility. You know, I think that, you know, in, I, I did HR when I was probably a teenager, when we first, when I was first doing my first managing job, and, and that was even before I9s. So now that, you know, there's, there's the I9, but the complexity of HR has certainly changed, and our requirements to follow certain laws and legislation is certainly something that we're paying attention to, but the two that we interviewed were just top-notch, and we're hoping the third is another top-notch interview as well. So hopefully, we get something. And we did get an acceptance from Josh Vanetta for the facilities and grounds maintenance worker position, but at this time, he has not finished all the requirements for hire. So from my understanding, we're gonna have to wait and see when that start date would be if, if he continues. So, and I will be out during that Memorial Day weekend, so, anyway.
Dustin, you're up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board of Trustees. Not much to really update since we last talked Thursday. Just a few quick updates. Soccer has now kicked off with the weather held up for us. It was beautiful Saturday morning. We had some busy fields and some happy kids out there. A little rusty out there, it was a little cold start for them at 9:00 AM, but they warmed up and it was fun. It was really great to see all the jerseys get out there, so that was our really huge rollout for that, because we did kind of a soft launch with volleyball, but that was over 200 jerseys we got out that day, so. Program's great, we got great feedback, people are very happy with that program. Facility rentals are trending very high right now. A lot of it is the schools in the area, all trying to get their graduation ceremonies, ice cream socials. The ones, when we are booked out in Eagle Park, we have been sending quite a few to Joe Stevenson Park. The eighth grade will be doing their continuation kind of field day over there and having kickball tournaments and volleyball on the soccer field, so that sounds like a good time. Election results was turned into DOLA, and they certified the election. And we've got quite a few pending liquor licenses coming. You guys will see that coming on future agendas. We have some public hearings coming for two of them, for Fourth of July and block parties, and we have two renewals on tonight's agenda. The vendor applications have been coming in, quite a few already for block parties, and Bayfield Heritage Days as well has turned in their application, and I will be forwarding that out to the directors and setting up kind of a meeting to go over some of the needs and wants that we have and they have. I think we've opened up some really good dialogue with things that had happened last year. They had a very succinct list, and I gave them very succinct answers back and kind of let them know, here's where we can cut some costs, but we need you guys to follow through with some volunteers for trash, things of that nature, so we can keep it cost down, keep it fun for everybody, so. Any questions for me?
How come we had such an increase in soccer players? It's crazy.
I've been trying to figure that out, and it's, it's all in the, like, pre-K to second grade ranks. Seventeen teams, I believe, between those things, but we only have, like, third, fifth, and sixth grade teams. My theory, and it's only a theory, is those older kids are playing baseball, too, because we've got baseball running at the same time, or most of the little kids are doing soccer, but looking at the demographic information, we, we've just got families with little ones moving to town.
Yes.
So, yeah, it's super fun to watch them.
That's probably cute.
I call it amoeba ball. They look like a giant amoeba following the ball around, but I actually refereed the fifth and sixth grade, and, and they were tired, because I have to run double headers because I only have three teams. So that second team was tired, and I told them, you guys, please get one, give me one more team, and we had four, we wouldn't have to run double headers, but, yeah, quite a few in the lower kid ranks, not as much in the big kids, and their field takes up a lot of space, but Mark and DJ and those guys put in another little kid field on the north end today, so I think that's gonna help alleviate that, at least with practice, because everybody wants to practice Tuesday, Thursday. I have a very hard time getting people to practice Mondays and Fridays, but I try, so I can spread them out, but.
How are you doing with volunteers for, like, reffing and whatnot?
Struggling a little bit. I mean, the problem is, is a lot of them are girl soccer players right now, and their season's going, so they've got regionals this weekend, so that's why I'm, I'm gonna be refereeing again this weekend, but struggling a little bit with that. Sometimes it confuses me, because I can get four to show up to the volleyball tournament we got going right now on a school night, which baffles me, and then on a Saturday morning, we're really struggling to get them out there, but I, I like refereeing, that's the fun part of my job. I take that over typing minutes any day.
Do we offer referee training?
What we usually do is, I do have one professional referee, Doug. I mean, it's not an official training. If I can get a big enough group, and we did this last spring, I bring him in like an hour early, and they get a little lesson from Doug, who's a professional referee. He goes all over the place, and if we're lucky, sometimes we grab him, too, and we get to use him, but, yeah, he does a little clinic with them, because some of the rules are different. I mean, a lot of people don't realize, if the ball's on the line, if it's on the line, it's still in, it has to be completely over, so we just go over little nuances like that. One reason I ref the big kid field is that's the first age group that has offsides, and offsides even baffles high school teams, so I'm still, I like to work that field just because I'm trying to teach them offsides and get them ready for DYSA or middle school soccer.
Well, I do the books for both DYSA and then also Durango Baseball and Softball, and they have kids down to the age of 12 that can ref for the same, so encouraging kids to participate with that. I don't know if we could come up with some way to reward them at the end of the season, or, you know, nothing major, but I know that both those leagues encourage their kids to become refs.
Soccer, we're fortunate, we can use youth referees. If you're gonna ref adult sports, you have to be over 18 due to Colorado labor laws. One thing DJ is gonna do is he's gonna reach out to the college to see if we can get some exercise science majors, or, you know, people like that that might want to come make an extra buck. The trick is getting them to Bayfield, but we are gonna reach out for that. We do like having the younger kids because they know their sports. I mean, I have some great basketball referees that are on Bayfield High School's team. Their availability is just tricky to work around.
Thank you.
Parks and Trails, Mark?
Evening, Mr. Mayor, Board of Trustees. All parks, facilities, and turf have been aerated and fertilized. All the irrigation has been turned on. Irrigation season went pretty smoothly this year. We had a couple irrigation line breaks, but no mains or backflows or anything that costs a lot of money or takes a lot of work to dig up, so that was good. We were glad to, glad to have that. We did repair a lot of sprinkler heads. I've tried several different brands each year, and some of them last a year, some of them last three years, but we, we probably replaced, I don't know, at least 20 different sprinkler heads this year, so that's a little frustrating, but, you know, it is what it is. We did already turn off the water tap for Joe Stevenson Park because the bean ditch was actually turned on very early this year, so that was nice. The looks of the fields this spring, to me, is just a huge improvement with having that water earlier and being able to fertilize and, and get all that, especially while the cool, you know, temperatures and allow the grass to grow and kind of get going early, so I think putting that water tap in was a very good improvement for the grass. We did start mowing and, and doing all our ground and lawn's maintenance. I think this is our second week doing that, so the guys were kind of excited to get out in the field and get out of the shop and do some work, so that was good. All the bathrooms, the water's been turned on at Eagle and Joe Stevenson Park. Again, no breaks there, everything turned on, is working good. And we will be cleaning them on Mondays and Fridays, and then typically, if there's a rental on, on Saturday and we've cleaned it Friday, we leave it, but if there's multiple rentals or another rental on Saturday, then somebody comes in on the weekend and picks up the trash and cleans the bathroom for those, those rentals. Yeah, the last of the shade trees we planted on Arbor Day, I know some of you were there, and I did finish all of the grant reimbursement paperwork last week and got that all turned last week and got that all turned in. I've earned back from them, but we should be getting a check from them soon. I'm sure you've all seen some of the comments on Facebook with the trees at Eagle. This has been a long process. You know, we've been talking about this since last year's budget season. There is a very good reason of why we put these trees, because we're struggling with the high temps and the grass and the amount of water that we're using. My personal opinion is parks needs trees. Eagle Park is, is not a multipurpose field. It's, it's used for the community, you know, to walk their dogs, their kids to play. We have had, you know, the, the Brew Fest there, which I personally don't see that that's gonna cause an issue with that. Actually, instead of people having to bring their tents, they'll have trees to sit under and be shaded. So I think it'd be a good thing. But we have, I've had more positive comments. I've had a lot of people approach me in the park and as well as the, the guys, you know, they've told me that people's approached them. But we do have some negativity, you know, that, that some people are upset. But really, I, I believe that it's, it's a good improvement and it's gonna help save water and, and keep the grass green. You guys have lived here a long time. So I'm sure you've noticed in July, August, you know, there's large areas that pretty much diminished to dirt. And we're watering that twice a day sometimes to try and keep, keep it growing. So the shade trees are gonna provide, you know, the shade and, and keep the grass cool. And that's, that's the main purpose. So I don't know if you have any comments or concerns on that, you know, or, or feedback. I'm, I'm welcome for that.
What is your watering schedule for the newly planted trees?
So we've been watering them manually with a water tank in the truck. And we're gonna have to do that until they, you know, start growing and, and get settled in. Eagle Park is an odd address, so it waters on odd days. I try to start that later, you know, nine, 10 o'clock, once the community is, is gone. I believe there is 16 zones in that park. So it takes quite a bit of time to get through all of those zones. The areas that struggle and, and you know, get burnt and, and dissolves the dirt, I'll water those. Sometimes at like five or six in the evening. And if the public's there, it's kind of an inconvenience. But you know, it's, it's what we've been having to do to try to keep the grass growing. We've amended, you know, we fertilize every year, twice a year. We've top dressed it with composted soil. We've aerated it. This summer, I'm gonna put some polymer in there and see if that'll help hold the moisture. We did it on the soccer field last year and I, I feel like it worked really well. So.
I was just concerned a little bit with the size of our new trees and they're gonna need water to get established. You know, deep watering.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah. So we've been going once a week and, and watering. It's taken about two, two tanks. I think that's, I think it's a hundred and fifty, 200 gallon tank that, that we use to water those. So, but once they've gotten established, then we'll just let the lawn sprinklers, they'll get watered from that. So we did get the twin bridges, shared use path inspection done by the Army Corps of Engineers and SME Environmental. I felt like it went pretty well. You know, it's kind of a tough deal. I, I guess, and I'm not sure who before me, they planted a bunch of saplings. I think some cottonwood and some willow. And the deer ate a lot of them in some areas. We did, cause I met with SME probably about five months ago. And we did and went back and did a bunch of weed mitigation that they advised us to do. But as far as like the natural habitat, I mean, you guys have walked through there. I think it's, it's a great place for habitat. I think some of the trees that they planted survived and some were, were eaten by the deer. But there's not a lot that the town can do for that, you know, unless we fence it off. So, but I feel like we're probably gonna get, you know, an approval on the final report from them is the, kind of the gist that I got from them. I did reach back out to both of them to see, you know, when that is gonna happen. SME responded and also emailed the Army Corps of Engineers. Haven't heard nothing back from them. So we'll see what, what we get from them. You guys have any other questions?
I just have a question. So when we got the 33 trees, how did we decide at that? Did you decide at that point to put them all in those, those particular parks?
Yeah.
For the grass?
Yeah. We did them at Mesa too, because we have the same issues over there. We had one that we really didn't have any other well, else to put them. So we put it at Gosdy. And it was an ornamental tree. And there's two crab apples over there. And we just put it in line with those two. So, but yeah. And then at Joe Stevenson, we put trees where the master plan actually had already had designed to put trees in there. So, but I wanted to put some along the edge of the soccer field so that the kids have a place to retreat and get out of the sun too.
Are those the only places? I saw where you put them in Stevenson Park. Are those the only places that they're on the master plan?
As far as Joe Stevenson?
Like there's not any up by the playground equipment of Joe Stevenson or along the path?
From what I remember on the master plan on the northwest end of the soccer field, there's gonna be much more trees. And then around the skate park, there is, I think, two trees by the, the playground, but I, I wouldn't be opposed to having more around the playground. We'll be looking at a shade structure for that too, once we figure out what we're gonna do with that park. But yeah, there is gonna be a lot. There's probably, I don't know, 30 or 40 more trees that'll go into Joe Stevenson Park alone. So, yeah.
So I guess I have a quick question. You were saying that you start the water at 10 AM. Is it because you can't start it earlier?
Not at 10 AM and at 9 PM. Did I say AM?
Yeah.
Sorry. Yeah. No, we, we do it at night.
And then what time does it come on in the morning?
It'll run all the way through. Most time when you guys are getting to work, it's still, and we have till nine o'clock in the morning for it to shut off.
So it shuts off at night?
Yeah.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. And I believe it runs all the way up to nine to get through all those zones. So I got them all at about 30, 45 minutes now, depending on the areas that need more water. But as it gets hotter, we'll go up to like an hour per zone. So yeah, it's kind of hard to get all those zones through that period of time. So.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Senior Senator Coordinator Report?
Yeah. So Carrie provides this paper document or the document in the, in the packet every other month. So this is her May packet and she is, you know, as, as we're moving along, along the lunch folks, about 50 to 60 folks per lunch day. So that's good. And she's really excited about that the Tuesdays games and card making is the attendees are starting to increase as well. So.
Okay, we'll move on to the financial action agenda. First up is the April 24 disbursements. Does the board have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the April 2024 disbursements.
Second?
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Hartz?
Yes.
Trustee Katzos?
Yes.
Trustee Snooks?
Yes.
Trustee Morland?
Yes.
Trustee McLaren?
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yay. Next up is the Mankas and Cortez trips.
Yeah. So the, there's six currently right now that are signed up to go to Mankas. They are serving fajitas, beans and rice. So that will be, and they've, they're gonna host us and they're also gonna provide dinner for the board. So I've asked if we could help contribute and they're fine. Basically they're, I think they're happy to see other board members come to their, their, their training. So as far as a transportation there, Chief Hogan would be happy to take two or three in, in, in the vehicle, the town vehicle. And then maybe another car with, you know, with three in it. So, you know, I, I'd like to coordinate this because we gotta figure this out before it's actually gonna be Monday.
Well, I said I'd be happy to drive Katie. So that's fine.
Are you interested in carpooling with anybody?
Sure.
Okay. So I have Alexis, you, Mayor Ah, and Laura. And then it would be myself and, and the chief. So, did you want to coordinate that? Does anybody else have any ideas differently?
Probably for comfort, probably three. I could take three comfortably. I mean, I could do four, but.
So if we had, had three in one vehicle and three in another, is that okay? And, and maybe the, the chief and Kat, you just meet here at town hall? What, like almost around four o'clock? That work?
Yep.
Any?
I'm just, maybe I might be over there already ahead of time. I just have to see. I haven't confirmed that, but I can email you and let you know.
Okay.
You can add me on the schedule for both of those, but I'll be coming from Durango. So I won't have time to come to Bayfield.
Okay. So just add you to that. And Cortez as well?
Yeah.
I think we're last day to.
So does that change our numbers, Katie?
Just change it one more, I think. And we will post this because it will be a public meeting, even though you may not be making any decisions. So, but you'll all be basically doing official business. So.
Might want to leave a little sooner for Cortez.
Cortez, you're gonna have to leave sooner.
Yeah.
Yep.
But four's probably fine for Mankas.
Yep. So I kind of got a better description of what's going on at the four o'clock. So the actual CML district meeting is gonna start at five o'clock at Destination Grill. And that's when there'll be a happy hour. And then there'll be, well, there'll be a meeting, a happy hour, and then a dinner. The four o'clock is at the Cortez Visitor Center. And that is going to be a special presentation for all those attendees that come to this. And there, you can also get a, a, you know, a Cortez welcome bag. And there'll also be a raffle for some very special.
What?
Awards or gifts. So, so we're talking really about a four o'clock. And I didn't really, that's why I wanted to get some clarification from Cortez. And I got it today. So I guess if there's going to be six of us going to Cortez, the chief has not indicated that he's interested in going to that, then it could be the same thing. Maybe, you know, I mean, I'd be happy to, to drive. And, you know, I don't know if anybody else would be, but maybe an earlier leave at, you know, maybe if it's a four o'clock. I don't know who wants to go to this four o'clock.
Well, I'm definitely interested in going earlier just so I can get more familiar with everyone. So I feel like right now I'm committed to putting in as much time as I can.
Mayor?
I think I'm going at five.
Okay.
I'll be there at five.
All right.
What are they gonna do at the visitor center besides give out goodies?
It's gonna be a presentation on the Cortez area.
Okay.
So they, I asked to make sure that we're just not gonna be, show up. I mean, yeah, we, we've visited, we've been in Cortez. But it'll be kind of a special presentation from the Cortez, Cortez Visitor Center.
Okay. I'll email you back with both of them.
I'm at five. I can't.
You're a five o'clock. Mayor's a five o'clock. Laura?
I'd like to go at four.
Okay. So maybe if I can, Kat, Laura and myself, if I drive this time, any issues with that?
No, not at all.
Okay. All right. And a five o'clock and you're planning to drive yourself and you're already gonna be in Durango, Brenna. So, okay.
So we meet here at three for that?
If we're gonna be there at four o'clock, it's gonna be 2:30.
Leave at 2:30.
Yeah. Would that work? All right. And the, the town does provide you mileage. There's, I mean, you're gonna get served dinner. So there's no need for per diem. So just FYI, just kind of need to know if you want anything in advance. So.
No, I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah.
I'm good too.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Good means.
I'll wait.
You'll wait? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate that. What helps?
Moving on. Initial salary survey results.
Well, I expected a shock, but I don't think I expected this type of shock. So anyway, I, I do have the salary results, but, but it's really initial. So there's really, there's a lot of work I really need to do to find out really what the job descriptions were. I have a couple that I think are under and I have a couple that I think are way over. So, so we'll kind of see where that comes out. But if I added that to our current agenda, it would increase our total labor cost $825,000. So it kind of gives you an idea of, you know, what that would do. Will it increase? Likely. I think that, I know that we're gonna talk about, when we finally get to file a report, you're gonna have a lot of department directors are gonna talk about the turnover and what it really costs to reorientate individuals to get them up to certain either law enforcement, post-certified and FTO trained and all that. And then your water and wastewater certifications as well. What does it take? We get them to a point, then we train them and then they're gone. And then we just start all over again. So, you know, I do know that that is, is gonna be an issue. The one thing I did that I, that I could not look away from is that there is some gender inequities in this that, that for right now, I'm just gonna leave as a count of males and females. However, eventually when we kind of get to the end of that, that is something that you're gonna have to make sure there's some equity in that as well. So I, I know that there's, there's concern regarding, you know, the, and Alexis, I'm, you called these electives. And, and I think what I'm seeing and, you know, I'm hearing from department directors, that there's some of these electives that are really, really small in comparison to the budget, but they are appreciated by employees. And so sometimes it's just little things to say, we appreciate you and maybe we'll keep them. I mean, we're, you know, if somebody wants to buy a new house or has, you know, a, you know, a family that they, they need to provide for, maybe that's something that, that they can afford to work for the town of Bayfield. But there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that we've done a couple of years ago. We, we got water bottles. We've had some barbecues. We've had breakfast. We've had some other things. You know, I think that's appreciation. You know, our seasonals, when we gave them a little bag, you know, it had chapstick and sunscreen and, you know, some really small stuff. They really loved the fact that they were appreciated. And we don't pay them really very much. So anyway, it's just kind of, just kind of my notes and input. I, I, I remember in 2008, after the housing crash and, you know, we, we had to cut everything in 2009 for our budget. And, you know, the, the suggestion was from our, my Board of Trustees at the time is to have a potluck. Well, and the employees were, were pretty upset of fact. In fact, I had two that said, you know, that, that's not showing appreciation at all. So I appreciate that you want to cook for them. Because I think that that's, you know, you know, an employee that I remember telling me this is, why should I go? why should I go, um, cook, why should I go cook my, um, my service dish, or whatever it's going to be, to feed, um, you know, when I want to, when I'm looking to be appreciated? So, I'm going to tell you a little story, because I think it's all about story. So, my first manager job, I was a teenager, um, and I worked in a packing house, apple packing house, um, and, um, I worked for a family. Um, the, um, father of this family, uh, was very adamant that the employees were going to pay for coffee and donuts. Well, a donut at that time was like thirty-five cents, and a coffee was a nickel. So it was about forty cents that we had to kind of take ca- take care of for everything, and, and, and one day I just thought, there was a lot of forty cents and nickels and dimes and whatever else to take care of. And so, um, I decided I was like, uh, my dad just paid for my college, and I was like, okay, well, I have a little extra money, so I'm just going to go ahead and just buy the donuts, buy the coffee, and put my own money into the coffers for, for this family. So, somebody came to the father, one of my employees, and said, hey, I just really love it that you're really, uh, value us, and you're paying for our donuts and coffee. Well, he was furious, so we, he went and told his daughter, and his, and his daughter went and come and asked me, and I said, here's the receipts, I'm paying for it myself. I said, it's no, it's not coming out of the, the, the family's business. And, um, what happened is the daughter went to her father, now, you know, he was going to run things the old ways, and, and she said, you know, it's not coming out of our (laugh) family business, it's being paid for. And the daughter basically went to the employees and said, we're going to continue to pay for your donuts and coffee. So there were four children of this family, and every other day, um, so there are four plus me, so five of us paid for coffee and donuts for this family. And, and, and you're, you're talking about forklift drivers, and, you know, sorters, and boxmakers, and everything else, and, and it really made a difference, they, they, they were happy to have a break, they, they really engaged with, um, this family, and, you know, the father really never knew what was going on, but, you know, the employees were just so happy. So, it's kind of the way I was raised as a manager, and I'm not saying that, that everything, that employees get everything, but I do think it's just a, some of those little things that they appreciate, um, in, in, in the, their positions.
Well, I think improving the, uh, work environment through those types of things, people want to feel good about going to work. And so, any way that we can, um, bring about that, um, that, not even a reward system, but just an appreciation system that says, hey, we appreciate you. Um, obviously, everybody wants to make more money, and I think if we have employees that are way below the standard rate for other munis, are like size, that needs some hard consideration. Um, because it is, I've ran businesses and, and had employees, and turnover was just, you know, harsh.
It's expensive.
It's expensive. Um, and so any way that we can keep quality employees here and happy, and feel like, you know, it's a win-win situation, that really matters. We're a small town, and, you know, caring for our, uh, our employees is really important.
I just want to clarify, I've been a manager that's totally been into all those little goodies and extras, and know the value of them. I also know that we're looking at a salary, uh, survey that's going to challenge us this budget season. So, we got to look at, we got to be ready for where we're going to figure this out and make the cuts and keep everybody happy. We have to keep the employees happy, we have to keep the town citizens happy. So, you know, do you want to keep a cellphone, and keep going back to the cellphone, which, whatever. Whatever little goodie it is, if it's breakfast burritos, or if it's a T-shirt, whatever it is, what of those things are the employees willing to let go of, and what are, do we need to consider? So it's more that conversation than it is taking away all the goodies.
When we're looking at the disparage, the gender disparage, are we also taking into consideration longevity? Like, who's worked here longer, because you're going to have differences in pay depending on... Some of these worked here for a really long time, they've had, had quite a few raises in comparison.
Longevity has, um, some importance, it has to do with basically, they already know the job, uh, but that also has to go through a performance evaluation process, so it's just not automatic.
Well, I know you've got numbers down here, so I just wondered if that was taken into consideration?
Um, that's not taken into consideration, looking at job description to job description.
Gotcha, good. Thank you.
It's kind of a funny thing, but I think that, um, a really good evaluation system for employees can be very encouraging too. You know, that when somebody takes the time, everybody hates, at least in my experience, everybody hates doing performance evaluations. But if you, um, take the time to really work with the person and give it the time, because they do feel that if you've noticed things that they're doing right, I always start with that, um, you know, it's, it just, it, I've always had employees just really appreciate if somebody really takes some time and thought, and doesn't just, I haven't seen our evaluation forms, but just rush through those, and they can be pretty motivating too.
We do do those on annual anniversaries, yep.
Are you good with keeping up with them?
Well, um, let's put it this way, HR director, that was, that was that job, that was that position, so now we're, we're, I'm notifying them, and they're notifying me.
Yeah, yeah, it's discouraging to be an employee and never get evaluated, I think.
You know, with, when you have a survey where the dollar amount comes up so much higher on salaries, we also need to start looking at, how can we get more money into that fund? Not necessarily always just, you know, taxes if we can help it, but if there's other ways or avenues that we can, we can help that particular fund to pay for itself. I know it's the hardest one out of all of them, but I think if we can do that at the same time that we're reviewing this and come up with a game plan on what we're going to do.
I think first, a lot of the allowances and, uh, the benefits that we get, I know I personally use when we're interviewing people, I use that as kind of a way of recruiting folks, um, so if we're not meeting those, those salaries of some of the other units, or, you know, people or others that are, that are offering, you know, all those things add up to a dollar amount, so, for me, it's a good tool to help recruit as well.
So is this salary survey based on similar-sized communities?
It's based on the CML, um, salary survey, and also Employers Council has one as well. I pulled that out, and I reviewed that with, uh, Lisa Blue, our HR, um, uh, consultant. It, it may have something to do with, uh, you know, CDL drivers and equipment operators, but we still found a lot of lack, um, you can use it for, you know, uh, receptionist, administrative assistant type of duties, but there's a lot of things that we just couldn't quite match that. So those are, the similar, uh, part that we need to really verify, really, first of all, I need to start with a couple of jobs, well, probably a good twenty-five percent of job descriptions need a review to find out what we are matching it to. And then you look at the similar size.
Yeah, because like, if we're comparing us to Denver, Colorado Springs, like, there's no way we can compete with that.
Well, this is all of the, all of the municipalities in, in Colorado, and she didn't, she didn't pick out Denver and Colorado Springs, those were not, those, a lot of those bigger ones, Pueblo, Fort Collins, all of those were, um, excluded from any, you know, consideration. Grand Junction, I forget what else got excluded, but...
Okay.
I think it would be important to track, like, when, um, you're interviewing employees, you know, what people really lean into, um, and have a, a more accurate tracking of that, um, to report back in our decision-making. I think that would be very beneficial.
Typically, an HR director's, uh, role, um, that, but yes, uh, I think we're getting it from all of our, uh, directors at this time.
That's true, I mean, some people, they could really care less about the benefits, they say you pay, they pay, you know, the people that's, you know, that's, you know...
Well, I think it's important to strike a balance between pay and, you know, benefits, um, and understanding that, and really working for the board to work diligently to be as creative and thoughtful as we can in, uh, trying to head in that right direction.
Any other comments? Moving on, Resolution six fifteen for the Moravan Grant Cycle? What else do you need, Mike?
Moravan, yeah. Um, so, we received ten thousand dollars from Michael and Elaine Moravan, um, and I just didn't think it was right just to put it in with the, all the other, uh, grant cycles, and this may be competitive process, everything is submitted one time, and then you make a decision on the competition, you know, how are they meeting, um, are, are they providing services to veterans? Are they providing services to where is needed most, is his comment, and are they in, are they serving in, in the town of Bayfield, so...
Well, personally, I like the fact that, uh, you wanted to move ahead with, uh, or suggest, um, that we go ahead and create this, um, for just-in-time output, especially since it's for our vets, and it might be more on a case-to-case basis, but the fact that they were very specific in their letter, how they wanted the funds to be used, um, I know vets that could really use some, some boosts, so however that's decided, um, I think it's a, an excellent idea to get it out there, and I think the, um, Moravans would be happy to know that it's not gone into a pool and kind of getting lost in it, when they've...
I agree.
...specified vets, so...
The Platte County does have a spec, a guy who's in charge of helping out the vets in any way that he can. He's pretty good at doing that, and he might know where it's, where some problems are, and people that can help with that.
And is that the VA, um, is there a VA sign?
He's a, no, he's a county employee, his name's Greg Dotson, I can get you his phone number later.
Yeah, that's what I can...
Or we get checked with the VFW, and what they've got going on, maybe they've got some members that are in Bayfield.
Well, they, they're looking to give it to an organization though, right?
Five oh one C three.
Right, five oh one C three. What organizations do we have in Bayfield that serve veterans, I mean exclusively?
I don't know if he's looking for exclusively, I think he's looking...
But just services that they can use?
Well, Pine River Shares is a five oh one C three, I, my guess is that they serve veterans.
Well, yeah, we serve everybody over there.
Well, that's what I mean, you serve everybody, um, you know, the, the senior center is not a five oh one C three.
No.
Uh, so that would not be an eligible, um, area. Um, you know, there's, uh, there's, you know, there's a lot of programs in the area that serve, so I think just getting it out there, if they're, if they have a business license in town, I'm going to, uh, contact them directly. Um, and a business license for a nonprofit or a five one C three does not cost them anything, and they just get a license.
So, on the resolution, it does say we're needed, we're most needed and identify specific services for veterans. Is this more of a and/or situation?
I, I think that what I, what I'm just hearing is that he believes that town of Bayfield was a good recipient because he can use his, his veterans', um, uh, insurance for dental work here. And that, that's the only reason, I didn't want to be and, it was just where is most needed.
The resolution's written as and, so to me, it's where most needed, and it's...
Yeah, yeah.
It's, um, veteran-related, so it has to have both.
Yeah, my assumption is that anything that is a service, a nonprofit, is probably serving veterans anyway, um, but it, it's really going to have to be up to the nonprofit, and if, you know, if you don't get any applications, well, we'll, we'll change it.
Okay. That's what's my concern, because I, I think this specific language in the resolution may prevent some of our nonprofits from applying.
Sure.
Well, and I think it would be interesting to, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, you're fine.
Okay. Uh, I think it would also be interesting, when I, um, worked at the Archuleta County Senior Center, they had a VA representative that, that was housed there, but he had avenues to all kinds of resources. It seems to me that it would be, um, it would behoove us to have something where this organization could come into our senior center and work with our seniors specifically that are vets. You know, I'm, I'm not sure how that would work, but, um, putting the word out, where they would come to Bayfield and assist our vets.
So they do come once a month.
Great.
Yep.
Yeah. Does that person have, um, access to anything, any organization?
I'm sure, I'm sure they do.
Okay.
They're, yeah, I'm sure they do.
Okay. A lot of times, it's just people don't know, so if our VA rep doesn't know about this opportunity...
Wouldn't it be nice to highlight them?
Yeah, 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 for sure.
So we're looking for a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution six one five, Michael and Elaine Moravan Grant Cycle.
Second. Got a motion in a second, is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Hartz?
Yes.
Trustee Katzus?
Yes.
Trustee Snooks?
Yes.
Trustee Moreland?
Yes.
Trustee McLaren?
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yay. Vision Strategic Plan Consulting Service, RFP sample from the Leadership Development.
So I did, uh, draft, um, a visioning and strategic planning request for proposal. I did talk to Patrick Rondinelli, uh, that you may remember, he did the DOLA training. Um, there is, uh, admin grant funding available, and it's a match one, one-to-one. Um, so I, it, it's in your, it's not, it's not in the electronic packet, it's in your paper packet here. Um, so I just provided, kind of copied the same, same format as the Leadership Development, and I did talk to a couple consultants, including the one we're currently using, and they thought that twenty-five thousand dollars and a match, um, for half of that, um, so about twelve thou- thousand five hundred dollars would be certainly possible to do visioning and strategic planning, uh, for the Board of Trustees. So that would include a preliminary interview with each elected official, uh, prior to general sessions. Um, it would be, provide for one and a half to two-hour general sessions, June twenty-fourth to the thirtieth, which would just be around when we're getting ready for budget season. Uh, provide the framework for strategic planning, so basically, you know, here's all the things that you need in a strategic plan, and then provide draft outline for the outcome, it can be compiled to achieve this strategic, strategic plan, and then assist as necessary to finalize leadership development community outcomes, so... So, it's what I was requesting, but this is, but I heard that at the, um, retreat, and I thought it was a great idea, and, um, you know, your, your input would certainly be great, uh, we would, we would advertise this, uh, so that we had, we were eligible for the grant funds.
I love the idea.
Are, are we doing a strategic plan then just for this board? Would it, it, it wouldn't hold any future board to the strategic plan that we created out of this?
So, the, it's almost like the comp plan, so you spend a year and a half doing a comp plan, basically to get to your vision, your mission, vision, and values, and basically putting that, editing that comp plan. So it'd be the same process if a new board came in and said, well, we, we don't like that, we, we want to change it. And typically, you're going to find, just like the comp plan, it was just, it was just... And typically, you're gonna find, just like the comp plan, it was just, it was just updating it, not necessarily. And there were a lot of changes, but it was updating it based on the community input and the Planning Commission and the Board of Trustees. So, I mean, you are elected officials and, you know, if a new board comes in and changes something, I mean, they have that authority to send that process back to square one or back to check it out.
Right. So, we have a change in the board in two years. And I'm just considering that when we're looking at the time and financial commitment.
We still have a solid foundation with the remaining people though, because you've got, you've got five.
Right.
I think there's only one, me.
Right. Right.
No, I mean, five, five people that just started of, well, who's on the two here?
That's me.
Oh, that's you, okay. So, four, still a good foundation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, a strategic plan is how you budget. I mean, when I first got here, you know, the first budget we were trying to do in a pandemic and there was nothing normal about anything we were trying to do with, with the, you know, all the money, all the things that we, that we were going through and the funds that we were getting and trying to figure out how to spend those. But this is, but this is basically, kinda, it's gonna help determine where this board wants to go. It's gonna help understand where the leaders, the directors need to go. It makes me understand how to direct our leadership team and basically how to put a budget together. So it's complying with what you, where you wanna go.
So currently, there's no strategic plan?
No.
Okay.
I, in fact, that's the first thing I looked for when I got here and then we had a pandemic and it was, it was a, it was a brand new day.
The other thing, and just, you know, considering the RFP, because I remember Patrick saying that he had those resources available through DOLA. So, that's the only resource that's available through DOLA. There's no, like, do-it-yourself programs or anybody that's available through DOLA that can do that kind of training? Because they have it all outlined on their website. We offer training for boards, but that would mean they offer a grant for somebody to do the training for boards.
That's.
There is no trainers or anything available through DOLA.
Well, so, so I've been a part of quite a few strategic planning processes. And the significant thing is, is a facilitator. So a facilitator basically helps organize, you know, the, what do you wanna call the plan? You know, they, they take, you know, seven people and try to figure out, are we all really going in the same direction or are we not? And I think just the leadership development, and I can't speak to what I feel is going, but maybe the directors can talk about where they feel just having a facilitator versus me nagging at them all the time, maybe they can tell you how it's worked for them to see where we're all going.
Have you utilized the Leadership La Plata program? I know I went through a similar program in Virginia and we got trained as facilitators when I went through that program. I don't know, do they have people that work locally that do it?
So I think that program is for individuals, like, I, as a state employee, I could go. As town manager, she can go. You know, Brian could go if he wanted. But I don't think that they take like a cohesive group like we would be and put us through that, if that makes sense. I didn't do that one.
I know they had some local, they seem pretty good facilitators. When we did the Conference for Philanthropy, they do every three years or whatever.
And those facilitators are paid to be there.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know if it's.
World Philanthropy Days is a great program, but yes, those are all paid. And mostly everybody there that's at those tables, except for the nonprofits themselves, are paid to be there.
Well, I feel like this is also sort of a training, you know, program for the board. It really helps us understand better how to communicate with this, how to, you know, facilitate, you know, budgeting and getting on the same page. I think a critical statement in here is, Bayfield is slated for increased growth and demand on local resources. The ability to manage development pressures and planning for the future are more important than ever. And so I feel that this gives us an opportunity to be more forward-thinking and to do a deeper dive. And I've done this in other major organizations. And it is, it is powerful in trying to get people headed in the right direction. The outcomes are much greater in the positive range than they are.
To your point, Kat, we're gonna have unprecedented growth in Bayfield. And unless we do a moratorium on growth, you know, that's kinda where we're headed. And, you know, can we handle it? Do we know where to go from here? And I, I think getting an expert involved to help us have a plan set in place and also have that plan be a foundation, that then the four people who go for the next term, you know, where the three of us are gone or who knows, maybe renewed. I won't be, because I'm termed out, but, but, you know, having, having that plan, it's, it gives that, that foundation, not to use the word again multiple times, but it gives the foundation of where to start from and what to build off of. And we, right now, we have nothing to build off of. So I agree with you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the town manager to forward RFP out for advertisement.
I'll second. I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
Trustee Snooks.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaren.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yay. Action Agenda, Mill Street Bistro Retail Liquor License Renewal?
I can go and speak on that. Mill Street Bistro has put in for, to renew their liquor license. I did reach out to staff, including the directors, and got no negative input on that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Mill Street Bistro Retail Liquor License Renewal.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
Trustee Snooks.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaren.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yay. Western Refining Retail Liquor License Renewal?
Yeah, as I said in my report, there's quite a few coming in for summer season. Same situation here, I did reach out to the directors and staff as well as chief and no negative input reported.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Western Refining Retail Speedway Retail Liquor License Renewal.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Hartz.
Yes.
Trustee Katzos.
Yes.
Trustee Snooks.
Yes.
Trustee Moreland.
Yes.
Trustee McLaren.
Yes.
And Mayor Ah.
Yay. Public input changes to the agenda?
I think, Mr. Mayor, you had, had stated in our working session that allowing us to ask questions of the public when they come before us, right?
No.
Isn't that what you said?
You said the public asking us questions.
Yes, and then us being able to respond, correct? Yeah, that's, that's where I was headed. I do think that that's worth consideration. I know from personal experience that when you come before the board and you share something or have concerns about something, it'd be nice to have the board ask questions at that time. And it's not for debate, it's just for clarification. I think the public feels that they've been heard. And then I also feel that it gives them a sense that we're gonna consider what they've brought forward.
Which is pretty much where I was at with it. It's like, people come here and they wanna hear an answer, they don't. They don't wanna wait for the answer or whatever. And some questions just can't be answered, I mean, it's like, we gotta get back to you. But that's still an answer.
I, I don't know if we can answer, I don't know if that's appropriate, but I think showing that we have heard them and we're engaged with what they have to say, I think is important.
I think it depends on what's brought to us, whether or not we can respond to it.
Right, right, something we won't be able to.
But I definitely think that we can, we can say to them, you know, we hear you or ask questions, open-ended questions to get them to feel like they're being heard and that we will get back to them on it. But then maybe somebody needs to monitor whether we're getting back to them.
Yeah.
As the public, can I make a comment?
Sure.
Brian Blanchard, 627 Louisiana Drive. So I think this is important. I think it's good that you're kind of addressing this, because the last couple of years I've been coming to meetings fairly regularly, it was really frustrating not to be able to ask questions. Either something that's predetermined that I wanna know, but also what might come up in the meetings. Because a lot of this discussion are things that we're sitting here going, please ask this question or dive deeper into this. It'd be great for the public. And I think you'll get a lot more support from the public if we're allowed to actually get away from the draconian system that we're on where we cannot ask questions. I mean, that's why you're here, is to help us understand what's going on in the agenda on each meeting. So, I applaud you for taking this on and I think it's a great idea to allow us to ask questions. If we can't get the answer right away, that's fine, we understand that may take either dialogue between you all or some further informational, you know, looking into kinda thing. But thank you for looking at this.
I have a question for you. For the sake of orderliness, I know that before we would ask, and this is not in this agenda, but we would go through each item and we'd say, does the audience have any input? But we would ask for that input prior to the discussion. Does it make more sense to ask for the input after the discussion?
Absolutely.
So that we can ask those questions?
Absolutely, that's the problem.
Because I noticed we moved the general public input on agenda items to the very beginning and so we've lost that opportunity for them to even talk about the agenda items when we get closer to them. So I kinda like that idea of asking them after the fact. That's just my personal opinion.
Yeah, it makes a lot more sense for the audience to, you're gonna get a lot more participation.
Thanks, Brian.
So, in the other communities I served in, it wasn't necessarily on the agenda, but it was, you know, 3C, we're gonna talk about 3C, there'd be discussion, the staff would be answering questions of the Board of Trustees. And then the mayor would say, now is the time for the public to provide anything else. But that's really, you know, without having it itemized each one, it was really up to the mayor to, to, is there any other questions or discussion? Staff's answered everything and then go back out to the public. And then if there's any, any other reasons to change your decision or whatever else. But that's really the presiding officer that has that opportunity.
And if I fail to do so, I wish someone would let me know.
Well, they can remind you.
I mean, I, sometimes you just get in a roll and.
Yeah.
I already did it tonight.
Well, and I think as a reminder, Katie, how you do the notes, you know, you could add that in there just as a reminder to go in that direction.
After a couple of times, it'll be fine, I just.
Just have to get in the groove.
You're used to it, muscle memory for your brain.
Right. Exactly. Do we need a motion or anything here?
If, if, if that's what you want, all you have to do is, is you're, you're kind of, you're putting us all on alert that, oh, wait a minute, we haven't had the public input after we've, we've all discussed it between staff and elected officials. So if you want us to put you on notice, we'll, we'll all do that.
Yeah, actually, I don't think there's any motion that's necessary. I think you just give the direction and the agenda can reflect that when there is some matter of public import that's being discussed and you get a staff report on that, then perhaps the third item on that agenda, agendized item should be public input.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Just include it on your agenda and then everybody, everybody's aware.
I, I like that. When I was talking, the orderliness, I meant that as well. Because what we don't wanna have happen is where we don't get an opportunity to discuss what's going on. So if you have it more regulated on when the next thing comes, then, you know, you know at least the trustees will get their opportunity to discuss what they need to discuss before the, the public input.
Right. So what?
How about thumbs up? Be good?
Thumbs up?
Yep.
Okay, moving on. What task force committees would the board like to consider? Budget committee or rec, district home rule, et cetera?
Master Park Plan Task Force. And I'm looking at somebody who'd be really good at leading that task force.
Now we saw where you came.
Well, task force involves the public, right? Citizens, yeah, they include the citizens, yeah.
So I really think a budget one would be really important because I think that our citizens don't always understand how the budgeting works and how different it is compared to like even a business. Just because we have so many different rules and regulations on what you can spend in this fund and what you can't spend in that fund, that it may help them to understand why they're like, why are they planting trees when they can't pay XYZ? It's because trees is under a different thing than XYZ. It's a different budget. And the public doesn't always necessarily understand that. A budget committee may help us to bridge that gap between, you know, what the town does and the understanding of the citizens.
Well, and I think it gives us great feedback, right?
And transparency, it helps with that transparency.
Absolutely.
I think it can help to the staff if there's certain things, I've heard a couple of times about, you know, not being able to get quotes or not being able to get numbers and maybe just helping the staff be a support to follow up on some of those items that are extra work for the staff during the budget season. Maybe they could take on some of those administrative portions of creating the budget.
Yeah, you just kinda have to be careful with that.
Right, with, right, whatever's allowable.
And some, you know, things like that, yeah. But.
You know.
One of the main things that the GOCO grant wants to see is community involvement in the park plan. So, yeah, the more community involvement, the more likelihood of us getting a grant.
But I agree with Katie, I don't think it should be, I mean, it should be citizens, not another staff meeting. So we just have to figure out how we get people involved in those two. But I think, I like the Master Park Plan. I would like to see it expanded, maybe a Parks and Rec Committee instead of just the Master Park Plan so that we can start to talk about some of these other items, like what are we gonna do when the gym crumbles? Those kinds of items too.
Yeah, I would say if you're doing a park committee, it should include like Parks and Recreation, not just, just for the park that we're hoping to build.
I agree.
It might be good to have one, a committee just like on childcare in this area or something like that. Or some other transportation is another area that we'd like some citizens' input and just like with these kids getting around to various places.
So childcare is, been discussed by BEEP, the Fire District and the School District.
Okay, so they're on that.
I mean, I'm, I'm happy, you know, all of these. I mean, I'm, I'm happy, you know, all of these, you know, we can come up with some nice little shiny flyers and, and see what happens, and kinda go from there.
Yeah. I don't wanna do too many committees, though, I think we should choose like our top three or top two, because if we do more than that, you're gonna have no community involvement, because there's too much going on.
Right, well, we dilute it.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, you gotta remember, you gotta fill all the seats, you know.
Well, it's hard enough to get people interested in coming to those kinda things, just to begin with. Yeah, you add, you add that dilution factor that you were talking about, it's, it, it would not be good. And even though it's, it's going to be ran by, or volunteered by citizens and, you know, whatnot, there's still is town and staff involvement in it, because they are the ones that are gonna have to educate people. So it is going to take some time from our staff to be able to do these. So in addition to diluting, we also wanna make sure we're not putting too much of a strain on them as well.
I agree, I think the two would be a good start, the budget and the Parks and Rec, or Park Plan, or whatever we wanna call it.
Parks and Rec, and include the Park Plan.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause there's so many parts to Parks and Rec and the Park Plan, and, you know, even Parks and Rec Committee could even be recruiting umpires for us.
It, it can also go as far as, you know, helping them to understand that it takes money to put something like this together, and this is something that the town has said that they wanted, the citizens have said they wanted, and so we have to find a money source somehow. And that's probably a tax, I mean, I'm, where else are you gonna get the money from to do something that grand as our Park Plan? And it might be a communication effort to help get more people involved that actually can spread the word of what it really means to do that, and if that's what they really want, then they should vote yes for it. Because I think there was a lack of communication when we tried to put out that tax beforehand, where the citizens didn't really understand or know what we were trying to accomplish, that when they did that, yes, we want this plan, there's a component to pay for it, that they also have to say yes to.
Well, and it would help, it would help with the public involvement, having them...
Choose it.
Choose it, right.
Exactly, yeah, like really choose it, not just, yeah, that looks cool, I want that.
Right, right.
But choose it.
'Cause everybody wants it, but nobody can figure out how to pay for it.
Right.
Now it's like, okay, community, you want it.
Exactly.
Help us figure it out.
Exactly, that involvement can make it happen. Or make it smaller and make it happen, or, who knows?
Well, if you just look at the success of the library and their funding...
That's what they did.
There was a plan, right? They put together a plan, and a strategic plan at that, and got the word out, and got the word out, and got the word out, and the more you talk about it, the more the people, you know, learn about it, and I think the more involvement you'll get, or at least approval for the direction that we're heading. So, you know, a lot of us assume the direction that we should be going, but I think getting that public involvement, and like the budget, I can easily see, you know, people from our community that work for a bank, you know, that, that are involved with budgeting a CPA would be great, 'cause they also bring education.
Right.
And answer questions that maybe we struggle with. So, you know, our outreach will just have to be specific.
Right. I like those two.
Part of, part of what you were saying about the tax, and we didn't really get the information out there to inform the public, would like an election information committee be something that we should look into then? 'Cause then when it comes down to like these sort of things, they can kinda devise a plan of how can we inform the public on this is why we wanna raise the sale tax, like...
So, yeah, that's a great idea. A lot of times when you have a committee like this, that, that is involved in something like that, they'll create like a subcommittee. For example, the housing, the Regional Housing Alliance is a committee made up of the municipalities, representatives from the municipalities in this, in the La Plata County. And we created a subcommittee, called a steer committee, to get citizens involved, that they are then to spread the word and, and kinda get more information out there to the public. And we chose like key players in the community, people that are very involved and know a lot of people, that, you know, would be supportive of what we were trying to do, supportive of housing, and so therefore that they can then spread the word and create that, exactly what you're saying. So yeah, that's exactly what we, we can do.
I just think if we have like, whether it's a subcommittee or it's its own thing, I think if we have some, I'll get closer to the microphone, I think if we have a group of people that their sole focus is to try to educate what we are putting on the ballots each year, because most of my friends in the town and stuff had no idea what it was about. I only knew 'cause I was on the planning commission, and I was late to it, and I, I still didn't even know it, all the way through, you know, it was, it wasn't talked about at all, and when it came on, no one wanted to raise their taxes, 'cause they didn't understand what it was going to fund.
Right. Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, when the library did theirs, I actually was involved in a lot of the, the getting out the knowledge and talking to people about it. And I, I think if we hadn't have done that, and we did, we did it for months, and we would do it for this event and that event, in the paper, well, we only had a paper back then, but, social media, you know, Rotary, what's the other one, Kiwanis?
Kiwanis.
Lions Club, thank you.
Yeah.
And, you know, Senior Center, and everywhere else, you know, that they were constantly going to those places to educate people on how important it was to the community, so...
What about a banner over here at Joe Stevenson along one of the baseball fields that has the picture of the Master Park Plan, and it says, "Ask one of your town representatives about the Master Park Plan." So it's, you've got all these parents out there with all their kids, and going, hmm, what's that all about, you know? It's, those are, those are literally our constituencies, or constituents, right? So how do we, how do we get, I've talked to so many people in this town, you know, getting my hair done or whatever, and they randomly say, you know, why don't we have a larger Parks and Rec Department? Why don't we have, you know, a nicer rec center? So it's out there.
Yeah.
They, they say it all the time, they just need to say it to the right people.
As we're handing out T-shirts, here's your flyer on the Park Plan.
No kidding, yeah.
I feel like the town did do a really good job of getting the word out there on the Master Plan, and we actually got a lot of feedback. I mean, last, the year, for last Easter event, we had the plan on a big old platform for the public, we had it on our Facebook page, we...
It was the paying for it that it was an issue.
Yeah, it was the funding.
It was the funding of it that was the issue.
Right, I feel like as far as what we wanted to do and what the town wanted, we got good feedback on that. When it came to passing that sales tax, I think maybe we kinda rushed that a little bit and didn't plan. But I really feel like getting the community involved to actually, you know, boots on the ground, talking to folks, and, 'cause legally, we can't advertise this like too much to ask for this money, but we can put the plan out there and ask what the public wants. By having the community involved to get out there and really get the word going, and like Mr. Snooks is saying, is a little more information on, you know, 'cause, yeah, nobody wants their sales tax raised, but they want the park, so this is our avenue of how we can do that, so...
Well, it seems like it's a two-part question, right? Do you want a master park? That's part one. Part two, how would you be willing to pay for this park? You know, it is, it's a two-part question. And I don't know that the second part of the two-part question was really asked, or there wasn't enough educated, education provided behind, how do we fund this? We know you want it, but, you know, I wanna win the Lotto. So how, how do you do that, you know?
So, to get back on the subject, it sounds like we want a Parks and Rec or a rec, or a park committee.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
Yeah.
And a... We're back on track. We kinda got off track a little bit.
I was getting there.
And a budget.
And a budget.
And a budget, yeah.
We need a thumbs up.
Two, two thumbs up.
Well, there were two things.
I know.
Yes to both of them.
So we'll move on from there. Is there an interest in a park site chats, perhaps, like ice cream at the park? Or Katie even suggested like hot dogs or something, or...
I'm a yes, and we could talk about these committees and, and get the interest in the committees, and that could be a good way for us to start doing that. I just don't wanna do too many of them.
So when's the, when's the block party, June?
June 11th.
June 11th, yeah.
I hate to schedule anything now, we don't know when the wind's gonna stop.
And Nicole, Nicole, I, Chief, and a couple others are out there every block party, and we, we have our tent up, our banner up, and we really get a lot of input from citizens that are coming by. The one thing about the, the park chats is that we've provided in the past, and the, you know, the other elected officials actually cooked and had, you know, in, in smaller, different parks, you know, you can go up to Gosney Park or whatever else, and you're gonna get a whole new subset of people, like, oh, I got free ice cream? Oh, well, we'll come up. And that may be, you know, I, I do know that we ran into some food safety issues, so those are all those things you have to be a little aware of, especially with the liability that you run into, to, in today's world. And that's why the trustees that were doing that stopped doing that, because of some, some issues. So, you know, it could be ice cream, the, the lady that has the pink, you know, little wagon, she's very happy to go to those events, but you probably have to consider paying for that, so you could actually encourage participation. And, you know, again, it's a, it's a couple dollars for an ice cream, but you're, you're gonna do far more than that, just to educate their parents and everybody else.
I really like that idea, and I would like to do it when the weather breaks.
Breaks us all.
I would agree.
It's not hurricane winds outside?
Yes.
Right, right, 'cause you have to be able to hold on to the ice cream and the wrapper.
Right.
And small kids could be taken away by the winds that were today, so...
Well, we can bring cinder blocks.
We could try to do it at the library, too.
Yeah.
Libraries are good.
I kinda like the, I like the park idea, because, well, we can travel, we can park travel. We can go to Mesa Park, we can go to Gosney Park, we can come down here, we can go to the library park.
Just like the county commissioners go around the, their area district.
They revolve around, yes.
I mean, we can do a couple of them and see how popular it is, and they, I mean, if we get good response, great, we'll keep it up, but if not, mm, bag it, come up with something else.
We could do a thing where, like, at each park, like, if there's three parks, and we had a person at each park that's gonna speak, and they hand out a little ticket, and at the end, when you get to the last park, you get your ice cream.
Well, make 'em work for it.
It's hard.
Uh, I don't know about how much participation we could...
Sounds like the Chalmers Bingo game.
Yeah. Dying around.
Thinking of kids in and out of car seats, in and out of car seats.
Well, they're at parks, they're gonna play in the park for a little while, let the parents listen.
Is there anything we need to be concerned about if we decide to do office hours? We just...
Two people, two, so I used to go with the mayor, and sometimes a trustee would show up, so when I have two, I don't have any issues. And we would go to coffee, we, I think, I forget what day it was, like 10 o'clock, and, you know, there were a couple days we'd have people, and there's a couple times we'd join the coffee club, and we'd hear everything that they had to whine about, but the thing is, is that one out of 10 complaints had something to do with the town, and then we could provide information for them. So, you know, two trustees at a location that you were advertising were happy to put that information out there, just like the county does. They have office hours, and it, it doesn't have to be a town hall, it could be a coffee place, a restaurant, a, the library, kinda any public area.
Well, and it seems a captive audience would be like a Saturday morning, you know, at, at the parks when there's all kinds of activities going on. We could have the pink ice cream truck there, which would bring people over, wondering what's going on, and that would be another opportunity. You know, you gotta go where the people are, and not kinda set up and hope the people come to you.
That's it, right.
Excuse me?
Oh, it's just nothing.
Do you have some direction to go on?
Well, I, I think it's gonna be summer soon, so we'll come up with some days. The ticket thing, I, may be a little more complicated than I'm ready to figure out.
I was just trying to get them to listen, everywhere.
And you don't wanna frustrate your citizens either, so...
We do that enough.
We, we did the ZipCo Day, and the town provided, you know, like free ice cream, and they did a movie and everything else, and we really had a lot of compliments, a lot of kids and family there that don't come to anything else. So, I, I can come up with a couple days, you know, Saturday mornings work, but then you still have to have an event there, and, you know, and they're, we have those schedules, and if you're interested in being there, you may wanna just let us know that you'd like to be there, and what you would like, what support you'd like.
Yes, I have Monday and Thursday night softball getting ready to start in a couple weeks, too.
Doesn't have to just be ice cream, it could be a dance in the park.
Dance.
Don't knock down all my ideas.
I like the idea of doing it with, in conjunction with the softball games. I really like that.
Softball's wildly popular.
Right, right.
It goes on all night, so...
All night and all summer.
And all summer, yeah.
We have bats. Any other input?
About the office hours, I, I think it'd be a good idea, if we can find times, it'll work.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
About the office hours, I think it'd be a really good idea, going to, going to kinda restaurants, but advertising it before you go, or coffee or something, and just hanging out and seeing if people wanna come in and chat about it.
If you just let us know, we'll be happy to advertise that and put that out there. I mean, you'll notice the county commissioners have done that for years, and, and they also go to different locations in the county to hear from the public, so...
I think that's a good idea.
You go to them versus them coming to you.
So you got your list of board report, or trustee reports and upcoming dates of interest? We're gonna start doing the board reports for people going to meetings, where you just come back and give a verbal of what happened at the meeting you were at? And we'll do that at the end of the meetings. Another net, everybody knows that the upcoming dates are, are there, so it's...
A little different on the RHA, it's actually gonna be held here.
Like right in this?
Like here, yes.
Okay. And where's the agricultural community information meeting?
It's here.
Here, too. Okay.
Thanks, you guys. Good ideas.
Okay, can you adjourn the meeting, it's 8:18?
Way better than 10.
We had a shorter...
My brain doesn't work.